We are about greetings to you all. We are about to start. Unfortunately, we are a bit late, but others who will come after will join us later. So, we are about to start. Unfortunately, we are a bit late, but others who will come after will join us later. So, we are about to start. Unfortunately, we are a bit late, but others who will come after will join us later. May we all please stand up? Please take off your hats? Please take off your hats? We are about to start. 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 Selitaskava, Denzelita, Sebinan National Anthem. Malupaga nyeso pondoloayo, iswae metadazo, luzwa poloyo, morena voloka se chavasa eso, ofedishe diendwa le matwe, se buluke se chavasa, esu se chavasa, South Africa, South Africa. Edi blofan onseye, melendi dipdefan onseye, wan di kranze anwoje. Sounds the call to come together and united we shall stand. Let us live and strive for freedom in South Africa, our land. Thank you very much. We are about to start. 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 We come from the National Parliament of the Republic of South Africa. We are members of the Human Settlement Committee. because we meet at the time when we have the COVID-19 pandemic. We must agree on the protocols to follow as we continue with this meeting. All of you must keep your masks on. Only at the time you're going to be given chance to speak. Then you'll remove your mask. for the members of parliament in this house. They can take a bow and you can greet them. Among them, there are also interpreters who will assist us with enhancing communication so that we can all understand each other. Their interpreters will be interpreting in Afrikaans. There's also Isikosa. There's also Sissoto. There's also Sizwana. We don't have my Sipeedi interpreter. We also have members of parliament in front of us. I'm Matwe Nirosinasiminyia. I come from Limpopo. On this side of my hand is Metapheni. She comes from Eastern Cape. In the area called Dujwa. Next to her is a man in Sisishwa. She also comes from Eastern Cape. She comes from an area falling under Nelson Mandela Metro. Next to me is Ntadema Suta. Ntadema Suta is from Limpopo and Haudeing. He speaks Sivenda. There are no Sivenda people in Haudeing. He comes from Limpopo. On my left hand side. We've got Mekumalo. She has got doctorate in qualifications. She comes from Haudeing. And Kwazulu Natal. Next to her, we've got Ntadema Laji. She... I'm sorry, he's also coming from Limpopo and Haudeing. We also have Ntadema Hatlazeke. He's from Free State, Haudeing and Lesotho. And Eastern Cape. And Eastern Cape. He's promised us to slaughter a goat because he's got the relatives here. Other members of the committee couldn't make it to this venue. Our committee is constituted of people from all over South Africa. Today, as we are meeting here, we are here to listen to you. We are not going to say much. Before we continue with the objective of this meeting. I just want to ascertain the number of people who understands Sissoto. Can you raise hands? How many of you can speak Sissoto? Okay. But if you can hear Sissoto, you don't have to raise hands. We are just asserting the number of people who are using a certain language so that we don't take long maybe with interpreting. Those who are speaking Sissoto, do you understand Sissoto? Okay. You don't have a problem if you can continue speaking Sissoto? But if you want to participate, you may speak in Isikosa. Are there any Afrikaans-speaking people among? Do you speak Afrikaans only? Or also understand Sissoto? Okay. Those who are speaking Isikosa, you may be seated in that corner so that you can be assigned and interpret. Yes, and then who can send somebody who's speaking Afrikaans to you. Also, those who speak Afrikaans will be assigned an Afrikaans interpreter. Can we do that in two seconds? Or you are comfortable with the languages that we are both using. Okay. Because I'm speaking Sipeedi, I don't speak pure Sissoto. And I know that sometimes there is a difference in terms of dialects. You may find that you are missing some of the information that I would like to impart with. So, I'll request Ntadetezeke to speak the Sissoto language that you all understand. To give a summary of what the bill is all about. So...
Etumela.
Thank you to the chairperson. As the chairperson has explained, I am a citizen of South Africa. In the end section, there's a place called Bapapatei. That is where me and my father and other people settled. This bill that we are discussing. It is a law that has not been approved yet. That is why it's called a bill. Its intention is to protect builders or homeowners? And it is going to work under the NHBRC or the National Consumer Council? It is going to require that builders register under the NHBRC? And they will be benefiting with insurance so that if, when they have claims under the NHBRC? There will be a fund called the Warranty Fund that will be working under this bill. This NHBRC will be working for claims if, say, the builder that was building for you was registered under the NHBRC and after three years of building your house, your house is leaking or is experiencing some destruction, you can be able to claim for that damage through the NHBRC. It is recommended for business people, especially those in construction, to register under the NHBRC so that they are protected and they also protect the people that they built for. As the name of the bill is the Housing Consumer Protection Bill, it is just that it is protecting those who are in construction. There was an act that came into effect in 1998 and this current bill is going to repeal that one. And all other amendments of that 1998 bill will also be repealed. This bill is not only focused on houses that are built by the government. Even me as an individual or other people that build houses are also included in this bill. Individuals and private companies. So, you as the public will be asked your opinion on this bill, on aspects such as registration and the fact that the fund was for two years, but now it's going to be for five years. The chairperson will continue with the meeting. I believe there were also some educational sessions that were had that explained to you what the bill is about.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zeke. Can I find, please, as to how many people within this hall were able to attend some of the workshops that had been arranged concerning this bill by the parliament? Can you please raise your hands?
Okay.
Thank you. As Mr. Zeke has just mentioned, the objective of this bill as to how it must be put into application and people who are building for us, how must it actually affect them? And also those who are building for us and maybe they are taking some shortcuts, what will happen to them? And then in this bill, we have taken note of the fact that even those from within the national provincial and some of the executives will also take part within the operation of this bill. And then we also have taken note that even some of the members who are from the provincial, national and other aspects of the governmental structures who are working along with NHBRC and also who are inspecting buildings that have already been made will all be taking part in this particular arrangement. The MMC Responsible for Housing. And then just as to add more on to what Mr. Zeke has mentioned, something very important is the fact that even those people who will be taking the inspection of these and people who have taken the work of building and also us who are actually the consumers, we are going to have this particular bill protecting everyone. We have chairs right here in the center. I saw one gentleman dress up more like someone from the tribe of the Bafugue.
Do we have any traditional leaders amongst us? Anybody who's representing traditional leader? Oh, okay. Do we have councillors in this house? No.
Can you come and welcome the people, please? You should have welcomed us. Now, here we are, have already started the meeting without having been welcomed. So, you need to welcome us and let us know what are the prescripts operating within this area here. We don't know them. So, we believe that today we are here present having very important guests.
All right. This is one of the things still already at most time whereby the councillors that are in Botswana are not well informed about this gathering. It just happened because I'm a ward councillor here and I work, my office is here. Then when I arrived, I heard about this event and it was so surprising for me. But it's okay. The work is so important that all the panel are here with and I welcome them also. And also, I welcome you, the community of Botswana, because the later information that I received was to say it's not only this word, there's a different word in this particular gathering. I'm pleading lastly to the organizers of this kind of events that when, sometimes when we organize such a thing, please consider all the stakeholders and the councillors to help you also, maybe to coordinate even more further. In the nutshell, I welcome you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councillor.
I, I don't think the municipality is not aware it's a correct thing, councillor. Don't go out, councillor.
Councillor, please don't go out. Come back inside. The chair says that he's not convinced over the fact that the municipality may not be aware of the setting of this gathering.
We want to put this thing in, in, in a correct perspective.
Because I did ask when we started saying how many of you actually were being told and informed about this bill. And quite a number of you had your hands raised up.
And the people from Cape Town didn't come here and mobilize you. Obviously, they've, they've, when they enter in every municipality, they go to municipalities. The hall that we use belongs to municipality. So therefore, it's not true that parliament has not communicated.
It may just be that some of the municipalities did not communicate with the ward councillors.
But we take note that some of the ward councillors were not aware. We'll then ask those that goes to, when they interact with municipality, we make sure that they have letters to invite councillors and members of legislatures. So, eee, we, I want us to proceed. I'm going to invite those that wants to, to make input on the bill. Can I see those ones to speak? Can you raise hands? We'll take five this side, five this side. One at the, at the back. You're the first one at the back.
So komo ra horo ra, ho kuena one.
The second is the gentleman with the brown jacket. The third one is the lady with the pink jacket.
And then maruna, you are appearing pinky.
The fourth one will be the, my, ndateka on the row front, yes, with the katiba.
And then that they are rolling a hat, you say, in the front with a hat.
The fifth one will be the gentleman with the maroon.
You are number four, merre.
Number five. That's number five. So I'm going to this side. You can wait. I'll come back again. Let me go this side.
Five.
Number one. Number two. Number three with the katiba, the red and katiba.
Number three is the gentleman with a
Gentleman, number five.
Green hat. And then we have number four, number five as well.
Come this side. We, we don't, we don't have the whole day. So please make your input very small. Use maximum little time that you have and raise lot of issues. I want to start. Number one.
Ti nguta dubinda. Ti ngunokontraka. Ndixaala konapa e Botshabelo. Ndixaala paya. Is ehchi.
I am staying in Guthabelo by the station.
Yes, as you speak, you must indicate whether you support or you reject the bill. No, I'm just reminding all of us, as you speak, whatever you say at the end, you must indicate whether you support or you reject the bill.
You must.
E bill di supportaka ku lukungo okondilap.
That's why I'm here. I'm here to support the bill.
E bill of quantity, USA embassy. Pakati kwam, no no contractor, no government.
It's the bill that is connecting me and the contractor.
E, e bill of quantity, is supportwa. He, he, he drawing, eh, sokangaayo.
The bill of quantity is supporting the.
Plani. Supportana le plani. Horu, ntweye emohaywa, ayaywang. Ki onana, hoyaka bill le contract. That's why bill of quantity ele bushoko hakana.
Quality of building is very important. This bill is supporting the fact that the quality of the building must be up to standard. As I'm standing here in front of you.
Kinali six GBPE.
I've got six GPPA.
Six GBPE.
Six GBPE.
Kinali CE P two.
I've got C, C E P E two.
Kinali NHBRC.
I've got NHBRC.
Kinali S, S, CSD.
I've got CSD.
Kinali triple BE.
I also have triple BEE.
Ki rakontrak.
I'm a, I'm a contractor. Fully fledged.
Yeu ibang di ntone di tama hunting. Kibekinali as nine GBPE.
If all was going well, I would be having nine G.
Nine GBPE.
Nine GBPE. Thank you very much. What I want to, to explain to our leadership. I'm still crying even now.
Ki haile mona, Botaville.
I, I, I'm a resident in.
Ki haile admin block.
I've built an admin block. There was an amount outstanding there.
Ekaloka one point three million.
About one point three million. Even today, I haven't received that amount. They are saying I didn't complete the job. I've got a letter from the architect.
Quantity surveyor.
The quantity surveyor.
Hundred percent work done.
They are saying the work has been done hundred percent. But I haven't received my dues. In the, in Botshabelo area, in the H section.
Kabu, kabua li mokancelara.
I communicated with the councillor.
Kabua li. Local.
Okay.
Local yati.
Okay, I spoke to the local ward councillors. They said there's the only way to get the outstanding amount. Is to build a house for someone. I built that house for that person. It's Mrs. Nganyan.
Six hundred thousand.
The house cost me six hundred thousand. I haven't received my money up to this day. I hope that when the national parliament is here. You'll hear my cries. I have cried, my people. I've been to every other place. I'm not receiving my money. Please help me if you can to receive my money. Where I'm standing at.
Kinali seventy years.
I'm seventy years old. I'm old. If you can help me, please do so that I can receive my money. I'm suffering. I don't even get in the old age grants. I've been submitting. I don't get any opportunity. It's very, very painful. Thank you very much.
Baba. Le ba fedi details iti alunaka ofel. That is corruption. So we'll, we'll attend to it. Number two. Molandati. Leave the chair. Take another chair somewhere there.
Greetings to you all, my elders and all the people who are here in the leadership. My name is Bonisile Kwema. I come from Ward Six Bloomfontaine. I'm standing here supporting this bill.
Because.
It's educating us, the youth who are new in the building construction. It's empowering us to do what is right in the building industry. It's also assisting the youth to approach the NHBRC. For registering as accredited builders.
Because.
Because we have lost a lot here in Mangaoom. When I talk about the houses that were given by the government. In few years after constructing those buildings, they begin to, to show cracks. Because our people are suffering. They can't mend those houses that are built by government that are showing cracks. So I appreciate this bill that is proposing that in case there's any damage, we know where to claim from. It's also assisting us in accessing the opportunities to build because people are giving opportunities according to their association of affiliation without even having building letters. To do that work. That's why we are experiencing many problems with our current builders. Because we are just picking anyone. Because the person can build. Accreditation or registration is very important. We can see where our government is leading us to. As I conclude, as to builders. Who know how to build but without qualifications or. Here's the opportunity. There's information. So here's the opportunity for you to approach NHBRC to register. So that your work can be lawful. I support this bill. My leadership.
Thank you.
My name is Sissi Muchumi. I come from Tabantu. I'm one of the residents and I'm in Samku.
Now, the thing, kuhuri. These are just red tapes.
We were talking about the red tapes.
But I still maintain that, kuhuri. They didn't say they're gonna give you red tapes because we are less privileged. You hold and CIDB is in Bloomfontaine.
I still believe that we are still having hicaps because the area you're talking about is very far from Bloomfontaine.
NHBRC is in Bloomfontaine.
NHBRC Bloomfontaine.
Whenever you want to do anything. As contractors, especially us emerging contractors, we are struggling.
We can't reach anywhere.
I'm happy that today you are here as a vote. Anything that we need to do.
I support this, this bill is very good.
From two years to five years.
And its time has been extended from two years to five years. So that us who are in GBPE, we can grow. I have been in that category and I can't get work from the government.
Cause CPE, at least I've got grade two.
With CPE, I'm in grade two. But with another category, we cannot get jobs. We only be becoming subcontracted from other people who are coming from somewhere. We are still performing some duties here in the townships. Working for our neighbors.
But, Botshatabaki, kuhuri.
But the problem is the NHBRC is not coming to evaluate our work so that we can get work as well. I'll request that the officials can come down to us.
They don't do anything by the office in money.
There are many people who are coming from outside this area who are doing work, but we, the locals, can't get job opportunities.
Ba ilu huru, they are not even registered.
Those builders are not even registered.
They should be agents ta NHBRC. They should be agents to NHBRC.
There should be NHRC who are coming down to do the work according.
Thank you very much. Number four.
I would like to greet everyone who is here and thank you for coming. My name is Bonola Madiahe and I am the citizen of Tabancho. Firstly, this one, this first point and the second point is to the committee. The parliament, the people that you sent to Tabancho to represent you, please ensure that they know what they are talking about because they have been giving us that we don't know. Please ensure that. Number two, I would like to take this matter of the interpreters. Please, they must just run along with me because we have a lot of points. Anyway, to the board and the parliament, we have seven issues. We hundred percent support the bill. Please consider these facts. My references is from the bill, the copy of the bill that we got from your members who you sent to represent you. The page number is page four to five. The chapter is chapter seven, part four.
Chapter seven.
Chapter seven, part four.
Chapter seven, part four.
Okay. Number one, we want to talk about the board. We need to know who are the board members. In Tabancho, we have the royal families. We request that, we request that the royal families or rather someone from the royal family or the kingship must be one of the board members. Number two, the housing. The housing, we have an issue in Tabancho where the municipality is taking the point of the people who have dispute with the people who had the title dispute, please. Number three, the warranty. The warranty period should now be instilled or should start or begin the day I have the key to my building or to my house. This is to avoid the confusion. Behind that thing. Now that the construction took two days or two years. And then you are going to find out that it messed up the duration. Haba tuva ba tla hua eza di seko. Point number four, the monitoring. The monitoring, we request and plead with the committee to please have a monitoring team or committee. This is to ensure that the inspectors of the land and the municipalities are now, if there's a problem, I know where to go to and I know they are going to be dealt with. The fifth point is the penalty fee. We request that the penalty fee either is reduced or increased to two to two point five percent. The reason being. The reason being, you know, we have a lot of construction companies, black owned construction companies. So that they do not get sabotaged. Number six point. We need the regional offices to have the stakeholders from the local areas.
We want the regional offices to have the stakeholders in the vicinity.
The reason being, we need every town like Tabancho to have a representative inside. The seventh point. This is now between the municipality and the royal family since I attested or I uttered words that they must be included inside the board. The bill must include that these two sectors, the municipality and the royal families or the royal members, need to inform the public in time, the community, in time that this land belongs to who and this building belongs to who, to avoid trespassing. I think you.
But what we forgot to add is that.
Thank you. I'm not afraid to say. They must have a skill to build.
Number five, is it number five? What's on my, the list is in Milan.
This is number five.
Oh, number five? Why do I have six people there? No, no, on the queue, the person who's controlling the line, I've called for ten people. Why I've got. Now, this is number five.
Oh, no, no, this is number four.
Oh, it's number four. Okay, alright.
My name is Sem Naga. I come from Butabelo. I greet the committee and everyone else who is here. I support the bill in full. Because it's going to help us a lot to deal with corruption. Because we would find that projects come to the community, but as a resident of the community, I don't know about this because it has come already with people appointed for the project.
And then, second point.
You would find that a project comes with people already appointed from Jobeg or other outside areas and the local residents don't have a chance to work on it, but so the bill will help us a lot with this problem. It's also going to help us with the renewal of certificates at the CIDB because certificates have to be renewed every now and again, but the problem is that there are no projects, so we don't have money, so the bill will help us with that aspect.
Okay, and then another point. Like hard grave building. In a specific, like building a great. There should be a builder, a plumber, electrician more under one project, a builder, a plumber, electrician, roofing and window plumber, motor, front, fenster, plaster, by the separately.
On a project, there should be different roles for the electrician, the plumber, the person doing the roofing and the windows, so that there is a clear demarcation of roles and a clear indication of where the funds go. And we also request the bill to assist us with the establishment of Butabelo Builders Forum so that when a project comes, we as the builders in Butabelo know about the project and what is, what it's about and how we can get involved.
And then the last point. Let me say. I feel like for. For this thing. Yaupatela, it'll take five years, but let me say, like two years before like the building. And then for now. It's a, it don't cover after. It was a five years, after getting two years. Two years ago, you think it's okay to crack here, from starting point. Is it still it's only five years or can I extend you a half for funding?
And then my last point is the funding for five years, would it still apply if I was in the building for two years or in the project for two years? Will the funding, can the funding be extended or will it only apply for five years?
Because I've stayed, I only stayed after two years in the house.
Because I only.
Only have a three year period, so.
Okay, because I've only, I only now have a period of three years, so can I get another two years?
Yes, and I thank you all. Number. Double five. So I want you to help me. When I say ten is ten. So this is number six, you say is number five.
Five.
No. We're making notes. So this is it, but it's. Fine, we want ten, ten, those that are controlling the queue.
My name is Tamsan Gambas. I'm a member of Samco in the province of the Free State. I'm in the leadership of the province. I thank Dadetiki for coming home. Because his father is the one who brought me up as he was fighting for their rights. And his mother. They are the one who brought me up and I thank you for coming home. I only have a few points. We as Samco support the bill. But the problem that we have is the lack of recognition of traditional leadership or that are not considered. Because I'm a part of the tribal community. And the bill does not show how it is going to cover us. Because it only talks about the local and national and provincial, it does not say anything about the traditional. The problem that is there when I discuss about rural and urban areas.
Only the, even the urban areas are now covered.
Debakata tropo are not covered by this.
Tabancho, it belongs to Northwest Housing Corporation.
Tabancho belongs to the Northwest Housing Corporation. And some of the houses in town are under public works. And some of the houses in town have been sold by the Northwest Housing Corporation. You hear that the owner is Depo, but when you get there, you find a Nigerian person occupying the house. And when you look in areas like Unity and other places in the location, some of the houses belong to the Northwest Housing Corporation. So some of our houses in the rural areas are, or belong to the traditional leadership. We have PTOs. But we don't know how those PTOs of ours will be covered. We have tried to contact the Northwest Housing Corporation. We have written them letters, but we have been unsuccessful because we were trying to become part of their committee to determine how houses and land are distributed, but we have been unsuccessful. In other words, Tabancho still belongs to the. There's also this issue of the Mangaoom municipality. We need clarity because sometimes when the traditional leadership provides housing and or land, the Mangaoom municipality comes and evicts the people, so now we need to know who exactly is the leadership in that area. We support the traditional leadership in that area. Because they, the traditional leadership allocates the housing. Because they, the traditional leadership allocates the housing or the land in, in a humane manner, not according to who has money. Now, the, the other leader who is the Mangawun municipality comes and just evicts people. I'm not criticizing the government.
I'm just correcting.
I'm just correcting. Thank you very much.
Uh, greetings.
Du melang.
Kalibito ki mzmkuulu inokmware. Thank you. Inok mzmkuulu mware.
Inok mzmkuulu mware is my name. I am from Tabantzu.
Kiba palakarulo ya Obama etapilwase chava kaha ka Tabantzu kama.
I'm a community leader in Tabantzu.
Ka uchurwale ki motu itu ki coordinator ya mukhalo wa, wa Sangko ka Tabantzu kamo.
I'm the Sangko community leader.
Now, when it comes to issue ya housing, consumer protection. I went through the composition of the board. Then kabona hori seven executive. Then ilkatelizwa ya fifteen mani elindina executive members.
And I realized that seven executive members is made up to fifteen.
Now, section three ating ibuaka table, the knowledge and experience.
Section seven talks about experience and knowledge.
Now, ne kiri hutuing ha. Eh, ne kiri hutuing ha executive fiina batuba seven.
Now, I was saying that in the selection of these seven committee members.
Let it be. Ba obana ni ki qualification ebemandita ruwa bohona.
Eh, otlamea orebe stlamoho rebatubano baba lema ngoloane paitsi.
Weteza hori, obani ki ona eh regulatory council. Itlamahweta boneti ba hori. Sena zeli ngirbili ri du melala katona. Dipeda hatwe.
Because it is the regulatory body, it should make sure that what is agreed on is implemented.
Eska bata beya hori because we want to include communal areas who are no buetapele babu kosi kaba karulo ya those particular councils. Ebemotwa mufuto rola hana lo na mangolo.
It should not be that when we want to include a traditional leadership, that, that particular person does not even have the qualifications.
Because the very same regulatory council.
Because eh na councila eh nuwa bulaut.
Inenzeliteng na konela hutuing, there is an insurance ya two years.
Eh, they were still there when the law for insurance of two years was in place where you could make a claim through them if your house had been damaged.
Na jualaka hai ebayiye ki zwa najo le iswalimunze slano. Hai ebayi executive fiya batuba seven. Hai ebayi batubana ni bi pikula bama ngolo weteza hori. Eh, hara batosa. Eh, use batubana ni bi pikelu singre use motala ngua galabakala obani. Ola from the communal area of Tabantzu.
So we are saying that these seven people, now that the time has been increased, should be qualified and experienced people. So that when we, um, when we make claims, it should be against people who are qualified, not just people who are in those positions because they come from the area of, of Tabantzu.
Now, howka ligusa dati regulatory council. Ki naana hori bilyena kai chaila mona ana obani. Ki bo na begoto ba kosan at the end of the day, which means itla ebayi. Retabe retpetela hobale matwi tla rinhatla ta hoa hua. Ebem contractor itzameyile. Nkui setin se dutla. Ri atseba rena reta ya karulo lela hoka, ka uchurwale kialibo.
So in conclusion, I, I reiterate that the regulatory committee should be made up of experienced and qualified people. As I said, they are the ones we will make claims for. So that in cases where a builder has constructed a house and left, we know exactly who to make the claim to. Thank you.
Eh, koso batubawa horu.
Greetings to all.
Eh, na ki ememo eh kiya esapota bili ekos. Itlabe isirelita bo na batubailongo re itlabe liboneti beneficiary itzamatu. Le baba ilongre ba konoko regamatu.
I support the bill because it will be protecting the beneficiaries of housing and those who have been able to get houses.
Eh, lehan na ki ememo ka ya kili mu yipereki.
As I'm standing here, I'm, I'm standing here as an entrepreneur, entrepreneur.
Le pele nenkileka itlamotlanee uh NCOP itilego stadiumeng hwanale di promises eti nantemo.
I, I was here previously when the NCOP was at the stadium and made some promises there.
Ma rebo ma shoku hori si, si losame sa kamotla, kamotla ngu. Ntsese chwanale sa fanda.
But eh, it is unfortunate that the, the complaints that we had at that time are still the same ones that we have now.
Antawari eh hwanahwatekiwa mayina lidi lotse longor dinedi chokaga la lidi profile. But eh, kilemo hori nempeela ya lore. Kotsama isue na ku kabatu.
Eh, because on the day, names and profiles of people were taken down. But I believe it was just eh, eh, an exercise to time, to pass the time.
Eh, motabe nyeh ya NHBRC. Eh, kineto gorenanon NHBRC enale online e services.
Um, it's true now that the NHBRC has online services.
Eh, ne hona lebatubailongo re mukomunze basa itu wananongre. Okahwana ozena yela. Laos i ko Bloomfontaine wa yakoribu internet cafe wa zena wa loga inimo.
And there may, there may be people who don't know that, even if you are not in Bloomfontaine, you can go to any internet cafe and just login and get into the NHBRC's website.
Eh, motabe njo nizeoza BRC into NHBRC. Ki bo na momo protection bili nyeh kobiwa ka hori.
Um, on the matter of the NHBRC, I see on the bill they are talking about.
Di, ki di powers eti longor di inspectora di nalijone.
The powers that inspectors have.
Ma ri di powers eti eti inspectora di nanlecho ne. Kubonsa hori, ki di powers eti longor di dilana yela leka di contractor.
But the powers that the, the inspectors have only deal with the, the constructors.
Ma ruwawa na alor chone chone di contractor azew. Ntsedi tolamola oelongo unzo oliteng. Wa hori eh baba rekisa batubailongo re bana makualo akonakakwa.
But those very constructors are breaking the law by employing people who are, who do not have qualifications to be in construction.
Eh, habana di qualifications akonamokon constructioning. Ma ra habana makualo akonamok South Africa.
Or they, they, they don't have qualifications to be in construction, but they also don't have the legal papers to be in South Africa.
So nenka rata ibileka ikuela ka hori. Eh, kukazinyua, kukana sentlaku kukazinyua Department of Labor.
Eh, I would be happy if the Department of Labor would also be included.
Ya, ya na party ya tirau, tirau yelo ngretabe tirua ki bo ne ba ba NHBRC.
And they must be a part of the job that will be done by the NHBRC.
Cause ahu molimung wa di emerging contractor ya karu na hori, rekre hori. Honalebatubaba ikisab contractiwa mo. Ma ra ha, honan sepsebananlecho.
Because.
How tava, abago consider cause we na otlakaze di chwanitzi. Onalima kualo otilitza chone zabo legua zabo dileta of good standing onalijone. Choneza NHBRC onalijone, CIDP onalijone. Kamanchwa mangawa chwan, ababa tu hori. Batubamo South Africa eh main contract di batubachallegopi.
Because it is not good for us as emerging contractors eh, that they are hiring people with no, um, right papers to be in the country or qualifications. Because when we come as South Africans, we have qualifications and registrations with the CIDP and the NH, NHBRC. They don't want to take us or subcontract with us, and that is a disadvantage to us.
Eh, nenka ikuela hori. Batubao konneli ko otweva ba ikri yangore. Batugalo ira zeba didira.
There should be a penalty for such contractors who are doing this kind of thing.
Eh, hutuza votoko cause lena kale kilemo contracting two thousand and five. Ma re eh, ki naana hori ntseki la pili lo ikhela wananu.
This is very painful for me because I've been in construction since two thousand and five, but I'm still suffering.
Motu te ngo kilenga exploitiwa ki batubaba otilibailongo re bachua kontoho, ho, ho, ho. Ho Free State, bakradi kontraka kakwa. How oru, oruwa oruha, selis dilan se, 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 semashu asasia. Bara eh, onalijone ketya oruachua kapu aten.
Eh, it's.
Kasewu kikopa yela kutu lazi.
It's very painful for me as a resident of the place that when construction companies come, they just set us aside and, and tell me, you are either, you decide to be in or out, and that is not right. Thank you.
The speaker, the speaker that have just spoken. You have spoken that you have raised issues with, with the NCOP and they've not responded to them. And you have not mentioned those issues. Can you, can you inform the table there?
Eh, du melang.
Greetings, everybody.
Ki du medise mu du lasdulo.
I want to say my greetings to the chair.
Le maloko ka fe la mo.
Eh, along with members eh on the table.
Eh, libiso laka ki mzoandile tane lingena.
And then my name is Mzondile Daniel Ngwena.
Eh, keswa Divestop. Divestop.
And then I'm from Divestop.
Eh, bili ki shaila monuana.
Eh, I support the bill.
Eh, keshe bile page thirty-eight.
By referring to page thirty-eight.
Item two.
Item number two.
Eh, ki wize fitile mbabuileka NHVRC.
And then the previous speakers actually made reference to, to NHVRC.
Eh, ki na hanalan hori, like ilie registration.
Which I think has got to do with the registration.
Eh, arewa ne ilie registration ne, like the workshop on zefi disameyilen.
Like eh, with regard to the, some of the workshops that we have been able to attend.
Bara hotuswe registration.
They say registration must be removed.
Ebay regulation.
But it must be a regulation.
Eh, swise fitilem otoa Tabantzu.
So the previous speaker from Tabantzu.
Eh, ne kupaa tafuli i understand that from Tabantzu.
Is asking the table, since he is from Tabantzu to Bloomfontaine.
Eh, request. Everything is in Bloomfontaine.
He said that everything costs us because everything has to be found in Bloomfontaine.
Eh, like ronar ezoa Divestop.
For example, some of us from Divestop.
It's about eighty case from Divestop to Bloomfontaine. Eh, nenka kupaa howka yesua di roadshows sort of.
So I would really appeal that some roadshows must be put in place.
Eh, like ronar leba cha di contracting new entrance.
For an example, some of us like the new entrance in the construction.
Obatiwa di tozos nanzo.
You find that there are some of the things which you don't have. You find that some of our fellow people are really struggling because what happens? You find some contractors that are coming from outside our area into our township to come and do the job there.
Renalebatuba na diski.
And then yet we do have people, skillful people.
Fela hara na dipampi.
But what we don't have are the papers, qualifications.
Eh, bili lotusa ya di new entrance emo ntna.
How is the people going to help new entrants with regards to all of this?
Certificate is a business ite. Batutabatiwa sena le sena. Basiba hau nazone.
We do have some business certificates that are being offered to the people, but we do have some who don't have.
Ebay NH, NHBRC ikakona lotusa our new entrances.
So whether we'll be wondering as to NHVRC will be able to help a new entrance?
Baba tusega di chokotza rokena because they are skillful. Fela they don't have the papers.
To help them with the needs which they have. We know these are skillful, but they don't have papers to show for it.
Hai ba bili gar tusaga se no kosa. Batubago na ba konne kutsu la bili so that we can build South Africa together.
We would be very happy if the bill can help you in that regard. Eh, elah hori batubana bama Africa Borabata bakonakutsu ledisa Africa Boragopi.
Kialibo.
Thank you.
Ki le du merisa boat monu.
A greetings to the House at large.
Bo etapileba ona bo lo gometen ke kuromentya ona esepachala.
Our leadership that has been dispatched by our honest, honorable government.
Le boat ba ilongo ba kokua nu kua nu khumpiye.
Together with all those who are gathered here today.
Kalina le sefane ke lenatmatobisa.
Eh, my name is Leonard Matobisa.
Ke tara keswa ko Tabantzu.
I am from Tabantzu.
Ke tara kilemu, munguaba ari ba ko Tabantzu.
I come here eh as one of the people from Tabantzu, one of the residents from Tabantzu.
Hape ki tara ki afiliite kana ke tara kilele lokola saunko ya kabango basababule pele.
And I'm also affiliated with Sangko, even as the previous speakers have referred to that.
Ya kala lokola interim committee arigini no ya mangawun.
As the member of the committee in this Mangawun region.
Ya nu nikilekua nu bakaichu ele hori, koki chwanite.
Honalebatu baba be di baba satenyandi maski. Rukopahorale tzele konkle kozale tzeenyandi maski katwe twe. Baba be it. Ki basati.
Kialibo.
Thank you.
Eh, ke tara kua nu bakaichu ke tara ko Tabantzu. Eh, ilongo re mbuateng kaiisi. Le katwa la thaka thaka na hori. Reseribuaka mbuya nu akasa buaka kadika hokapo.
So I'm coming from that area in Tabantzu where we have a problem with the top soil. You might be surprised as if now I'm deviating, speaking about the soil instead, instead of sticking to the agenda that is the bill.
Mbuwa rona kana leha sila rona lewela moma fateng amani.
Okay, so you're referring to the land. So the land that we are talking about falls into four divisions.
Bapeleki public works.
So the first one is public works.
Yaabu bediki rural development and land reform.
And then yaabu bediki rural development, dele tabolo ya dita.
Ebena tribal council.
Ebehona ya lekhotla la semorafi.
Yaabufo ena momaspali.
Me yaabu na yona ebeyewela kafatasha maspala.
Ke kancho uguang ni wize di hitilen di nse di buaka hula hula ne re le mochiona.
That is why eh you have heard even the previous speakers speaking about eh this matter that you have been considering.
Renale di kaho se di nsi mo Tabantzu se lungori di eme hela.
We have many buildings here in Tabantzu which are just standing useless.
Ya ka di wize di hitilen di buaka Northwest Housing Corporation.
Eh, ja ka di wize di fitileng. Eh, the previous speakers eh speaking about housing corporation.
Northwest.
Eh, Northwest Housing Corporation.
Renaleba to go unit.
Eh, we have a people in there in unit.
Basimba grade iti titi di even until now.
Until today eh they haven't got their title deeds, deeds.
Badula ka moma tongai ilongo re na konwelingwe bakatwa banzi.
They live in the houses eh from which they could be evicted any moment.
Kantra hori haba honu hori titi di neteng lidi premier se di hitilen dineza solufesa di operation zaza zanating. Batuhunzo honale matata hori lefapala mato le kahwana hori lehebatubao di titi di tza.
Because the problem has been that they are not able Because the problem has been that they are not able to have any way in obtaining the title deeds. Even some of their former premiers were not able to contribute to their effect so that they could be able to have those title deeds.
Re takuano re, ilonkho re, leka monu, ka moslo si chamo kona ten, ribuaka ka katasale fatela, le fa palama tu kore, honale ma tu, ante analidi asbestos, se lo kona nu nyana, ba ilonkho re, ne re, leza kore, leka, de fa pa leka tuse.
And also we do have many other buildings, even down to this day, which still have asbestos, and we wish the department actually can look into that and help us.
Ya nu ba khaechu, kiko pa hela re, ko page fourteen, chapter three.
Now, I would like to refer you please to page fourteen, chapter three.
Oh, chapter Roman figure three, eh?
I hope it is the right chapter. Let me try to find it.
Roman figure three, chapter Roman figure three, yonamo, section twenty-six.
In section twenty-six, it is a Roman figure number three.
Ya nu, keta more requirements of registration, ya di developers.
Ibu afanu fa ka di patla falata, ri kwa di sa, ilonkho ri kwa di sa, ba, 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 ele di developers.
And builders too.
Morole ba, ilenba aki.
Ki buaka di developers, kahone re na le, eri ya ko Tabancho, e kutuwa ki Station View.
I'm speaking about the developers because in Tabancho we have an area called Station View.
It's a private developer.
Eh, ki di developera, se di uza private.
Se di solufa, di temba, aki ba ten, wa ita okena mu, hau ya, ota mu, private developeri. Honale me poateng, ho, hotona le body pa, ka hotana le di, hotana le ju, se dinse.
Who have promised people, you know, when people come into business now, they put up a map and they start promising the people that there's going to be, I mean, parks, there's going to be this and that.
Mare, luku ita khumpia nu, isale ba tu ba, Station View baluane la pa, ka ele ten, mu me pengi impani, haba kono kui talaba ya ko Maspala, Maspala otsolera ka koba di, aledi hansa mezi, se ba lan kachona, Maspala kona de se dinse ilonkho wa di bua kore. Ye na ya ka ilor, hasi ya na dirilem planee, o ibona, ki di services, se di basic, ibagas kono koba di reyalo mare. Private developeri na, uhuema di ba tu ba sebati.
And then down to this day, the people in Station View are still fighting for a park which has been promised to them because it is demarcated right there on the map and they cannot get anyone to get going with it. Even when they go to the municipality, the municipality, they get themselves out of the equation and they say that all what is on there maybe is about the services which they are providing, so they don't want to have anything to do with the parks.
Now, kene gi talaosa kore, more registration in ya di developers. Ekare, koka, koka tinyelezo kore, ha ilor, private developer, is solufa di se ba tu ma, li di se dinse nyalo, la ile foki, format. Ma kone le di penalty, simutomun haria ka mu, eh, section twenty-seven, eh, buanka cancellation, ya di grading status.
And then what I would like to appeal is that if there are any developers who have promised people some services and these have not come to any fruition, then there must be some penalties. Just as I'm going to refer you now to section of point number twenty-six.
Section twenty-seven.
And then that is section twenty-seven.
Ebua ka grading status, sabona kore, kana suspension, kapo cancellation, reta ikope la kore. Is there any considerate way because, harina morika ya, ten, re le ba aki, because moto ki developera, eh ilonkho mani license, kapo, eh, registeri lo, kilefa.
Eh ilonkho re yona, ibu afanu fa ka, honawa ka bone, malduo a, ama na litu roya bone, kala ba kalakor, moncheng, ensenjalo, batu ba ki di developera, eh, mese ba ne basa solufa di se ki sa, ha si si, kono kude ra kadiwa.
Kita ko pa re, ko chapter five.
Can I please refer you to chapter five?
Re ntsuwa la ba khaechu, ki duweze di dinse.
Eh, hands full here.
Because already you have taken more than enough time.
So seto tera, na koe, efitele tse ngata.
Eh, mommy, o tlen tsuwa la, keta mutaulu, kapo, motomunka, keta mutaulu.
Mommy, please forgive me if it seems like I'm now going out of control.
Se lo se, ki se lo se ilonkho re, se to du la, se to ama ma se la, ona le ba tu ba, kankamo mu, ekare leka ba lepe. Yakale herona ritukile, sa le pa, kela ka ikope la, ela, noa.
This thing-
Ka kone bili, ha e kono kufu se so koma.
No, no, Papa we, there is lot of people who wants to speak. We want to give everybody a chance to speak. Speak more than eight minutes as we speak now.
So seto fitile, meni seto ele eighti, ralaba tu ba lebanzi le bao, satane baba ta, bua ra, ra eto.
Eh, mommy, page eighteen.
Kyama felelo, eh, ne.
Page eighteen, which will be the last one for you.
All right, irirey ko page thirty-one, kina na, keta ba botoka.
Okay then, let's go to page thirty-one, I think it is more important.
Ebua ka di inspectors.
Because now he's speaking about the inspectors.
Ribuaka, page thirty-one.
We are talking about page thirty-one.
Mo ilonkho re, ba khaechu. Koso kotaalu si te kuale, ko di claims, mo ilonkho re, bo, tu kapo councile, ha e kono kore, eka tusa ba tu, ba ilonkho re, nteya kache, eka sinyecha, motomunki aircraft space, kapo se fofani, se fetako dimu, kobo honale, zuko muho duwa.
So it has, it has already been mentioned that the board or the council is not really sometimes able to help the people who could have their houses damaged by the passing of an airplane perhaps, then there is the result of whatever could actually make the house reverberate and then can end up having a crack or something like that.
Ki buakan tweke lenka mocha, reheki di kusa faz.
So I'm speaking about something from an experience.
Eh, lori do kime mu ka mocha, kabi liyano, re ne re tla mocha, ya kore, hadi inspectors, ya ka kotaalu si te kuale, kore. Baski mo section thirty-two, thirty-one and thirty-two, kadi duweze roba, bone na kore. Ha bone, ele bone, ba ilonkho ba shanesi kore, ba khalimela ba, na tuka na, ba re, mo hawa shonako akiwa because re ba tu ba comply, every building, na extend, re ya Maspali, re tokopa tusa kore, na, re shanesi re extend, kapreka extend.
So we're speaking about the inspectors who must actually put the people in order and then to tell them that, look, there are some demarcated areas at which you don't have to build, etcetera, or if maybe they need to build or extend, then they have to report first to the council, just to make that known.
Ya nu, have inspector yona, e kona kore, ere mo lauli ana, nanga kona kore, se lo se se tuelle, hasi fesao tuela, kobo honale di kere, kobo hufu mani ya kore, inspector ke, na ilonkho hufu, awala, wile mu na sa shonana ten. Re tuse ya ya, ele ho, iduweki aircraft space, ilak, kubwa, harina, hufu mani, tusho, kuta mu.
Then the point here is that what do we do when the inspector comes?
Thank you, kile bukhile.
Thank you, sir.
Um, there are things, Baba, those that, those people, they are meant to help you to write things there.
Etate?
Take those things to the table.
Eh, kala dumelisa kape.
I, I want to say-
Kala dumelisa kape, eh, ba akwa, ba butabelo.
Greetings once again to residents of Butabelo.
Amo kore ba etape ba kone, ya nu ya.
And also our leadership here before us.
Ya na, kiti kuano, na ke, ma akwa, wa na koe tele tata, ya ka kile ya.
I am a long-time resident of this place.
Eh, mienwa ka hakadma tu.
And then also engaged in house building.
Mien ya nu ya, na ke sixty-six years, kense ki a kela, di kontraka, ti, ti, kete nuti, ka adi ya katame, ka ma adi ya masasa nyano.
At the moment, I'm sixty-six year old and I've been building many houses for many construction companies for not so much earning out of that.
Mien le ya nu ya, na kena ma di.
Even right now, I don't have money.
Ya nu, ka muho kuang, tae, le, le, taki sa ka kone, kore le taka tuso.
Now, the way I hear you, you say you are here to offer us help.
Ma aim sikapa, ma kemi se twa mi.
My intentions?
Enele kore, re na re na li experience, akwa akwa, koi kumuti, kile tete lo, kulela, keta kazu, banu kumuti.
Was there some of us people who are experienced in building, coming from such a place as Ikhomoze in Sotban? I even forgot to tell you that I'm from Ikhomoze.
Seki kemi se tshonena.
What I'm intended to do now?
Eh, kore, ti, le kana ba tu bochi, ba tu bochi, la hi li nyana, chelate, isibewa kora reye, kapu inti ya ro.
Just so that maybe the work that we have, even though it is so small, but could be able to cover everyone.
Kore, close corporation, construction, ne ki ona, hela, ne ka gradu, tesa kore. Ronar na li experience, se ba mu akosinti, eh, renal experience ya oni, ronari group, kapo tena, kana kapu fifteen.
I was thinking that maybe we could actually have some close cooperation that can help us. Quite a number of us in building experience, maybe grouping ourselves in groups of about ten to fifteen.
Fifteen yo, ekre yemo sebezi.
And then that fifteen can be offered some job.
Ba tu baba ta, hidwa mu, badia ta, le bone ba krei yemo sebezi.
And also handy people, handy work people can also be employed there and offer some job.
Eh, ke, ya nu, kha, kule ya lo, so sa ru na ba tata, bo bo no si, ka ki, res, ki le resu, ra, kena ma di.
So we, we could do that, but one thing that I've told you is that, as I told you, I don't have money.
Batu baba di kontraka, ba ba di resimba.
These people, for whom we worked for, the construction people.
Ba se ba na le mu ya, tawa, kore, bone ba ka igra ma kualo, kapi, kana ko tendera, kapi.
So they still have an opportunity to make some letters or to enter some of the tenders?
Wa bone ba na ma tata, ka ma di, yu kuwa, already, ba se ba gram, e sumo kote mu, mo prihtada.
They themselves don't have any money problems because they get work left and right in the whole of this place in Free State.
Ki, ki, kooza garo na, ba ilonkho re, na le ro na, ne ba ta, kora, regista re. Eh, ngaba, komiti ya ro na eh, eka, eka na li tuso ka eh, ka tabaya regista, koba, kore di ya ra, le ya ra, kua tshonzo, ncha pa di goza.
So I wanted, I was just wondering as to now, how can we receive some help? Because the community city here before us is here to help us and then we know that every year we have to renew our papers, then how are you gonna help us with, in that regard?
If yes, ne kulela kore, moncheng you, eh, harina, eh, kora ha kontrata, iti dekuwa, reka iti. Mare, hela haro na, le, kore le kontraka, leba aki, eh, rekakona, kora regi suye, ki Maspali, kore kota kontraka, kana kontraka di tena, mu mu, kona ilonkho ne.
The problem is that we have no way of knowing whether contract, the construction company is coming into our area, but if we belong to some of the construction companies in our area, then there is an opportunity for us to get to know these things.
Merika una mole.
And then we could benefit in that way.
Renale ma tata.
We have problems?
Kana kuwa, ha re botza kore, kontraka ita hakai.
So sometimes when we ask as to what is the construction company?
Ya ko intu beki ma.
Eh, coming to do and who has appointed it?
Ba re ra kore, ya apointu beki province.
They will just say to us, it's been appointed by the province.
Kolo kolo, kisantekalele councilara.
In the days of long ago, when I was a councillor-
From nineteen ninety-five to the year two thousand.
From ninety-five to the year two thousand.
Kene ki diro la ba tu di subsidiki, kilele councilara.
I used to make some certificates for the people because I was a councillor.
In ese province, eh, ni diro di subsidiki.
It was not the province who was actually issuing them. I yes, I used to actually have a look as to who are in need of the houses.
Mien ya nu, ronar, mo ba tati bu, ba yes or no, re na, ngaba, ronar ta tuseha, yakar ta regista, kiti le bone, baba inye mo kona, baba ta, ncha ra, nko pele, kore, hara ka tuseha kore, yuseti wela mu di atlenza ro na, koba, kana kuwa mu, ilo mu, buta, kela mu, ki aki di tata, kute mu, keta kuwa suki ba ne.
So right now, I came with quite a few and we are wondering as to now, how can we go ahead and help exactly when we do registering our leadership?
Mu etape le mu, kana kuwa, ne le premiera, wa kana kuwa ye.
Was a premier at that particular time.
Arablela, la sesi neti.
And he told us something that was not true.
Abolela koro, no yana, ne kela kola, ntsle, kara, kontraka kutoa kuwa, kontraka kutoa kuwa, no yana, mongolo mu, yo bang subsidia kha kwe, epasi ti. Mien, ota ipate la, batu baba iti mu mu, zingu kore, ba ituwa kasa.
Saying that you will no longer have construction companies coming from different places, but once your subsidy has passed, you can be able to locate the people whom you are looking for within your area.
Enelue na mu ngamo, mu ngantu, ota na paten pasela, ya kona mu beriki wena.
And you, as the owner of the house, will be part and parcel of some of the workers who are working for this particular construction.
Se hasi na kuza maya.
So after he left?
Eh, ronar eh, mete kore, kota na ya ta, buleti.
So when we were hoping for what he promised?
Kontraka, se na ya hakata, ya hakata.
We just saw the construction company arriving, starting to build all around.
Eh, kai ona na koe, ronar, ntsa, ntsa, bili sa, kori ko pa nonkwa, kori ko pa nonkwa, eh, ko pa nonkwa, koi ma councila, kori ko pa nonkwa, nonkwa. Ma kuwa hela ka.
And then we have been taken from pillar to post by some of our councillors and yet the people are busy building here and they are making progress. By the time when we were told, only ten houses were left to be built. And then the tenant against are saying that the people in Free State are lazy, they don't wanna work.
Na koe tlang, kona ya lo ka kore, ronar, yakar regista, rile, ha e ba, le na li tuso, le na li tuso, mo kona, re regista, rele ba tu wa na li experience.
So we don't want things to be like that because now here we are registered, registered as people with experience. We don't wanna see the same thing happening again, so we need your help.
Koba ya nu, kibeke te, kibeke te ba tu, ba ilonkho re, mu tu, ha iti kona, maya mu, anu tiaka, ya kide ya na, ha isi ya me na.
So I have worked for some of the people who don't even know whether the status of the building went extended like this, is it actually okay?
Sa kaha koli, bili se hela, kora, kase, pekti re siu, se to pekti ra ma tu, asasi ya mangawu.
All that is looking forward to is to buy an inspector to come and inspect the building and give him money.
Kyalebo.
Eh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, um, the other ten?
Re, le bukhile, kobe na kane?
Can we have those that want to speak, to raise their hands? I'll start this side now.
Ah, rekakopa ba, 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 tlan, kubua, tule tanga, ma cho, kore, simul la kafa.
The lady with the red one.
So, eh, o apere buhibidu?
Followed by the brother, two, three, four. This is for this side. We'll come this side.
Kapate kaku re le.
Ah, 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 Papa, o wele, kama, uze kama. No, gra, eh, tulas kalapan, kalapan, kalapan. Eh, two four, then it's five, mama, six, tata, seven, ma, eight, nine, the lady with the yellow, yes, and then the ten is here. We'll come back to others. Start ma.
Eh, dumela ba etape.
Eh, greetings to the leadership. Eh, I would like you to forgive me for some point.
If ketswa lo kue te.
Eh, if I go, of course.
Eh, bili ya lunaka, ananel.
I support your bill.
Eh, renal ma tata.
So we have problems.
Ronan ba renalindi kampani.
And that is some of us who have companies.
Eh, sometimes olola shela, oh, databasing.
Eh, sometimes I've been put into the database.
That's why ki re bili e, kai, kai, ananel.
That is why I actually say that I-
Banaba na lady kampani, ki ma libito?
Oh, libisola kampani, akaki ba kolo, tompa keteri.
Your name?
Oh, my name, okay, sorry, kiko pa apology.
Okay, I apologize for that.
Libisola ka, kilerato milisent, mu ilua ramile.
Eh, my name is Lerato Milisent, mu ilua, ramile.
Yes, eh, and then, I'm lost now.
Eh, sorry, I lost my point now, um.
Eh, re kaberila, kese di kampani, ko di databasing.
So we have been able to put our companies into the database.
Reza maye di workshopo.
Attending workshops.
And then, honale, emwe, enkile nyamkutuza, botoka, mu bo pe lo.
There is one thing that really got me so hurt, one time in my life.
Keza mile di workshopo ko Transnet.
I attended some of the workshops at Transnet.
Ban faunela for interview.
They actually called me for some interviews.
Hakifita mo for interview.
And then when I arrived for an interview.
Interview neli aten atlock.
It was for ten o'clock.
Hakifki fi kile early.
I arrived very early.
Hakikana kamo office, inkilo za interview.
So arriving into the office for an interview.
Ban plala kore, I'm late.
Then they just said to me, I'm late.
Karo no.
Kabaki wa rakare, no, I'm not late.
Ki tuhiloku, hakaka seven.
Eh, I left my house at seven.
Ban plala, kore se ba fili mu tu tender.
And then they just told me that we've already given the tender to someone else.
Hakisoa kamo nyaku.
So now when I was leaving the door.
One pizza.
He called me.
Ori kina le bukai.
And then he says, how much do you have?
Kaga, I don't have money.
Then, karna, kina chelate.
So, ki bu tata, desuwa ta, desuwa ta.
The private company.
That is why I'm saying that I do support this bill. I'm very happy to see because what it is going to do here is that it is going to do away with corruption that is found in the municipality and in some of the private companies. And something that is really annoying and that actually hurts as well. If you don't have money, the job that could have been given to you is now gonna be given to some other people they know or members of their family. Thank you Chair, I know that you don't want us to speak for too long, I've got a lot to say, but thank you.
Anything that has to deal with corruption.
And then if you can give names related to the corrupt people, that will help a lot as well. Thank you for the opportunity, my name is Tato. I'm from the Watseventeen in Bloemfontein. I do support your bill, a lot. And the reason why I support it? Is because I focus on page number thirty-one. Because we are very worried about inspectors. Of the land. And then in Watseventeen, we have a problem with water coming from underneath the ground. And also the boreholes are mainly found in the lands of the white people. And RDP houses have been built, but nothing has changed. And we also have some of the RDP houses for which the foundation is too deep. They get very affected because when there has been a stormy rain or maybe there's a problem with a borehole, the water actually gets into the house. It has already affected a great deal because most of our RDP houses have cracked or they have cracks. And some of the community members. And then some of the community members are no longer there, they have actually moved out of their houses because of being badly affected by many of these boreholes. Thank you, that's all that I wanted to say.
I would register that, that the name, the word. Thank you very much, my name is Dumsani, I'm from Bloemfontein. Mine is very short because I think I was covered by other speakers amongst other things was the issue of foreign builders and so on and so forth. But what I want to put on. What I want to put into the table is a contribution to leadership. It is the issue of students who are doing artisan, particularly the ones who fall under the sector that were busy talking about. My observation gives me that a lot of people we have, we have gathered here, they are elderly, the young ones who are here, it's either they are unemployed or they are struggling with business. My plea is that in South Africa in twenty seventeen. There were four artisan academies that were built through SITA. Fortunately enough, in Manganouwe, we have one, Motel Tivet College. Motel Tivet College. For obvious reasons, today it's a Friday and such prospective builders are not here because obviously they're attending classes. So I'm pleading with the leadership here of the board to make time to attend to those students because I'm sure for obvious reasons, they are not aware about developments such as the bills and then how to register businesses and so on and so forth. So my plea is that just make time. Those will also assist and help them as in when they complete, they do not become laborers, but they become employers through such knowledge, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Greetings, my elders, I'm from Watteidi eighteen, from M section. We've got problems at Watteidi. My name is Diekezen Lethosa. I'm from Watteidi eighteen. I'm the leader there. I write about save room, what? I write about service delivery. I was elected to be the leader of our ward. I appreciate or I'm here to thank those who employed me because they appreciated what I was doing. I was, the residents were appreciating what I was doing so, because I was working door to door so that they can get the services. Another company built the RDP houses that failed. Those people who constructed those houses were called back to come and reconstruct those houses. And thereafter, there's water coming in through those houses. I'm one of the beneficiaries of such RDP houses. Our assets have been destroyed by that water. I'm also having another project that I'm doing. Because I'm unemployed. In this project, I'm working with other people. Those people I'm working with who have been promised that you are going to get certificates for recycling. We couldn't get those certificates that were promised, but thereafter we had to go and fill in some forms. Because they were saying that we are from, we are doing small businesses. After filling in those forms, we had to go and get the bank cards. After getting those bank cards. We were given nine hundred rand. They said even though that nine hundred was very little, we're not going to be given just that nine hundred. We are still doing something about that project as we were promised something. Among those women that we are working with in that project, I'm the only youth in that group. It's very, very painful, my leaders. I'll stop there.
Thank you ma.
Greetings, my leadership, I greet you. My name is Pule Mukwena, I'm from Tabancho. I'm part of Manganouwe service delivery. I'm part of community policing patrolers. I'm part of Barolombaseli, get traditional leadership group. I would like to say we appreciate this bill. Because I can see that we are going to benefit something if things are going according to what has been proposed. Because here in Tabancho, we are very poor. Because during the previous regime. We were neglected. The attention was diverted to other areas. Now we can talk about Tabancho. We used to have malls there. There was a complex between Radlo and Mukwena. Those houses have been neglected, others are very dilapidated. They are not in use at all. That's where our prosperity was. I want to talk about our college that was in zone one. Our prosperity was also there as well. I want to talk about our nurses' home in Morocco Hospital. Also, our prosperity was leaning on it. I want to talk about our trust as well. Our prosperity was also there. There were also farms there. That's where we were plowing or planting our crops. Now that place has become useless, it's just a homeland or a rural area that's. In this bill, I would like to talk about the issue of housing. It's benefiting other people, others are not benefiting from it. I support the previous speaker who was saying or wishing that if everything could be done according to the purpose or objective of this bill, not according to political affiliation. Because if the forums are leading these projects, these, all the people in the community will benefit. I want to talk about what is happening in the cities. There are also buildings in towns that are occupied by the non-Sud Africans or foreigners. There's a war about those buildings because those buildings are occupied by the foreigners who are taking the opportunities for the South Africans who must work from those buildings. I wish that the powers of land affairs and, what is that? Public works could be taken away so that those buildings could be given to the business people who can make good use of those buildings. Yeah, I wish also that there could be a school to train people who can do roadworks. We've got a problem of roads in the tribal authority areas because there are no roads, the people can't go to work, kids can't go to school because there are no roads on rainy days.
Thank you very much, the last, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I greet all the leaders. Those from parliament. And those from housing. My name is Reverend Ngangisa from Butsabelo.
Really, I'm glad you're here, I'm an adult, I support the bill.
There's something that I'm wondering about the ones from land affairs.
Because always when they allocate land, they forget the church. And I'm one of those on the, um... And we suffer a lot about where we will build the church. We plead that the parliament and the ones from housing can recognize that the church is planned. Where we are right now is just a temporary place. Most of the churches have only been given temporary letters. We are unable to do anything with temporary accommodation. The municipality has promised us for long to give us title deeds so that we can own the land and pay for services. Some of us have been there for twenty-two years and we can't move. Please remember the church when you give land. We also request that there be a Christian representative in the local forum. We will always remind you to not forget the church. Because the churches have forgotten. I see that it has really been forgotten. We sang the national anthem and that was good, but there was no prayer. One may say there are many religions. But it is important to include the Lord in our lives. I want to say the following from the Bible. Amos chapter three, verse three. How can two people who do not agree continue together? As Christians, we feel that the government has set us aside. The government has indeed set us aside. The government forgets that we pray for the government and all those leaderships. But when they are supposed to serve the church, they drag their feet. I plead with those in parliament...
Parliament e teu hile jenana, hoba ning, loka limona, e musuaruna, uangwabana. Le luna le abona, le ba koba ning lisile mudimu kanle, kenya mudimu mererungyo le alon.
Um, Dadam Rudi, Renari, um, Morana Bulukas Chaba Sae Sukithape. Mara haru itlo twalala, rituar twalala katapelo engwe. Yaw tswanalili ba ta. So, but Morana Bulukas Chaba Sae Soufedi Setin Twa Le Matwenio, Kitthape, Luka Buyo. Uh, Arjwal Lepilima.
Thank you, and I greet you all.
Kalibisogbi Bitumelole Paila, Otswa Blofanteen.
My name is Bitumelole Paila from Blofanteen.
Uh, Word forty-seven.
Word forty-seven.
Uh, K community leader.
Kimwe tapilwaschab.
Ki wileli interested after oreke twalu workshop yesterday.
I was interested after the workshop yesterday.
Uh, retobuaka, uh, Housing Consumer Protection Bill.
I was a bit lost when Djetseki was talking. We're going to talk about the Housing Protection Bill. If I was correct, does the bill talk about us as consumers, as the people who have houses built for them?
Ore e protector, batu bai luhore gidi contractora, the private company.
Or is it protecting contractors and private companies? Or is it protecting all of us, companies and the people who have houses built for them? In my understanding, it protects the people who have houses built for them. Another aspect that I saw was the summary on page thirty-two of the bill.
Batu badi na nindisability.
NHBRC.
So, na kinne kere jaka ere, regulations. Ibu akadi regulations, saesabuaka horegista.
I would suggest that also people living with disabilities be included so that they may be skilled, so that they can also benefit under the NHBRC. Not all people will be interested in working with construction. Um, I like the fact that the build, the protection aspect will include the builders so that when they start to build a house, it can be checked right from the foundation. So that the occupants can see and the inspectors can see exactly what is going on from the foundation as the house goes up. When we talk about the municipality, we talk about a client. And when we talk about the developer, we mean the person who awarded the tender. Because there's a thing that people place themselves in, um, dangerous land. So it would be better if the people who do geological reports could come first and give the report about the status of that land. Is there are people who draw specifications?
NH, NHBRC. Enengare egascrepuyu.
Uh, the NHBRC should be scrapped.
No need for payment because most of batu bai luhore, batsebeza katonedi NHRC.
There should be no need for payment because the people who work with the NHRC don't have qualifications. Is there going to be board members?
The board members, he is on his, that's a manka di qualification, and then it waya NHRC, ebeli batu bai luhore, bakona ore, batole, the skills and training. Jaka ledi small companies, so that, I think, how ahua, house maybe Swiss row.
The NHBRC is the one that should get people with skills and qualifications because when you, when you get a job, it's not about how well you speak English.
And then warranty ating, haikisua batu.
And when the warranty is brought to the people? Thank you. Uh, greetings to the leadership. My name is Tony. From Blofanteen. Under Word seven. Bishop Square. Oh, Freedom Square, sorry. I will deviate a little bit. I want to talk about the RTT and the bill. I, my cry is about the houses in Freedom Square. They started building for us in ninety-one or ninety-two. In the time of Mandela. Our houses started falling from that time. Even now, they are still falling. I hear our leaders talking about, uh... The people that build should have qualifications, but even those ones, they had them, but the houses are still falling. Right now, I don't have a mother. Because of the water that entered those houses. Even my husband has passed away because of the water that enters those houses. So I thank you, parliament, for hearing our pleas, even though we were not screaming on the streets. Because you are here today. Thank you. Thank you, ma. My name is Betim Zambeza. I'm from Word thirty-two. Here in Butsabelo. I support the bill with amendments. Two or three. I will talk about the board. Constitution of the board, the structure of the board. Board members should be qualified people. I agree that some, the board members should be qualified regarding construction matters. But I would like to suggest that informal builders and constructors should have representation in that board. Who can be able to speak on our behalf, on our level. I will also talk about the warranty fund. Most people are only talking about government subsidized houses. Bonded houses are not included, and my submission is that... Bonded houses owners must also be included because, um... Okay, because bonded houses, sometimes motubale matata hori, unali fifteen years, having paid the bond and then washoka hala. Usna insurance e we kavarang, daba yao shoka hala, and then, and the other thing, o falo akimusabeti unceremoniously. Um, bonded homeowners should be included because sometimes you've been paying a bond, owning a house for fifteen years, and then you pass away. Or sometimes you lose your job unceremoniously. Katsiba, I might not be putting it, uh, in a, in a way, a little yet, but I know the committee, but katla kadi ideas, maybe research some issues and then agree. Warranty bond should also include bonded houses. Um, I know that I'm not putting it in exactly how it will be put in the bill, but the committee can think around the idea and, um, include bonded homeowners. And also about the penalty fee. But all the stakeholders, if there is a penalty to be paid by the contractor, all stakeholders must also contribute to that penalty. Um, the, I wish the penalty fee would not only apply to the builders or the constructors, but all the stakeholders that were involved should also be included in the penalty fee. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, I would like to greet the parliament and everyone here present. My name is Mo Ketsi. I'm coming from Word thirty-six, Rachee in Butsabelo. There are some of the points upon which I will just skim the surface because they have already been referred to, and then I will go on to those that haven't been touched. I would like to ask that this NHVRC can actually ask the municipality and the... And all those structures that are falling under the municipality to pull up their socks because things are actually, um, getting dilapidated. There are so many jobs within Butsabelo, but the end, the end of it all is not so good. For an example, when they say that the construction project should take nine months, you find that it only lasts for three months. For an example, when they say that the construction project should take nine months, you find that it only lasts for three months. It seems like the employers and the employees, none of these people actually know what should be happening and even when it comes to the money that must be earned from there, it is a problem. So we find a lot of problems really when it comes to eh construction, even when it comes to people who can offer some catering businesses. There are some people who have just been absorbed into these projects, not knowing where they're coming from. The problem here is that eh people are not following the processes. What happens here is that you have to buy the job in order to have it, or maybe it will be offered to family members, et cetera. Thank you very much, I wanna move out of this one, but now here is the problem, we've got lots of problems with the house. Related to money matters has been mentioned. So here, the comment that I would like to make to you committee is to request... We also, we also would like to have some eh financial administration eh as eh we are. The things we have come to realize that there is an embezzlement of our own money, it hasn't been used for its intentions and that worries us a lot because we would like it to be put eh, to be used for i- i- its intended purposes. And the second one? Eh has got to do with NHRC. The fact is that people have been requested to register with NHRC, but the truth is that thereafter you don't make any follow-ups. And here's the reason. To USCIBD and labor. So you actually don't cooperate. So if you want to see some progress, we wanna ask you to actually meet together and also meet up with our street committees. Here's the reason. We do. So we do register at the CIBD and with an affiliation of an amount of six hundred rents.
Every month.
Every month. As South African construction companies, we still don't get any jobs. So the foreign companies from outside are the ones that come and actually take our jobs. That is why I'm saying you as the labor department... You have to take the responsibility to check as to what are the skills that are needed here in South Africa and which ones do we have. Because in some other countries, you just can't work without having the skill needed in that particular country. But here in our country, we work everywhere. And there is no law that has been established so as to protect us as South African citizens. When I say involve the street committees... By the time, going back into history, when here in Bloemfontein, we were still under the leadership of Pekwater... You would have never have to sleep in any house without a permit. So there was no one at those, in those times who could come here and have some accommodation in South Africa, maybe even a temporary residence without having the required permits. So I'm trying to say, let's bring some difference. We want South African citizens to benefit in full from the opportunities. Because really what is happening right now is that benefits are going to foreigners and we are nowhere to be found ourselves.
Thank you very much.
Eh to the leadership here present. Eh the kinship. Eh our municipality. And also the technology system. Eh all the nation here present. Different ones at that. I'm not going to eh talk too long. My name being Moses, from Sebake- eh from the Sebakeisho family. And that is from Ward Thirty-Nine. Here in Tabantcho. I've got only two or three points I would like to raise. Eh to US leadership. And for what you are here for. Eh this is about agriculture. And differences that have been noticed between our cities. Which we have heard around from days of long ago. Which have been given for us eh to all, up to this day. The Ramorokas gave us... Eh since they are from the royal family. They gave us opportunity for agriculture. And we want that back. We have land. There is an area which is called... Gotabeng, and it has got a lot of products. Eh at, at which, eh in the days of President Bangobe... Made sure that the residents of Tabantcho eh will have eh production... By making, putting up some buildings such as Tabantcho San. And to make sure that the agriculture system was flourishing, which our municipality has just neglected them. Things such as Taba. Which actually was meant to be a game reserve, right now we don't have it. So Tabantcho has lost production and it's now suffering the bad consequences of all of that. And then buildings have been vandalized. Just as it has been referred by the previous speakers. We had airports. And some important buildings eh which were benefiting us. Now, all of them today, they are just standing as a white elephant. And so the last thing that I would like to raise. Eh we, we need to make differences. When it comes to the borders and we need to know our own identity. As South Africans and other foreign nations. We mustn't be eh always be differentiated from others. Because what we have within our country is we have been having enemies brought into the country with our own South African IDs. Which are now being offered to the people who are coming from outside. For example, when you go into Lesotho, they will not make an identity for you. Even if you were to go to Senegal, they won't make an ID for you. So those things are being received by people coming from outside. For some reason, they have an access to farms and everything. Which we as South Africans, especially here in Free State, don't have access to. So as the human settlements, we would like you to mark all of these things and actually make a reverse reaction so that people must not take our, away our rights while we are watching. Especially when it comes to agriculture, we have been given land and then we need to use it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Greetings to the whole leadership here, before us. Eh my name is Isaac Staita. And then I'm from Ward Twelve in Bloemfontein. So here is the point I would like to raise to the leadership. It's about our RDP houses. Eh in which fathers and mothers are still residents. So these have been built by the construction companies. And then just after three months, they start to dilapidate. And then when eh they start to have cracks, and once they have started to crack... Eh the old men and old women... Have signed what is known as a happy letter. And then when he tries to raise this matter with the leadership... They say you signed a happy letter and you actually appreciated that house. Now that is a big problem. So now I want to make a suggestion. Because I really appreciate and support this bill. Because eh what I trust is that within our own families... There are some women who have never had houses built for them. And some old men. And they will again be made to sign a happy letter. With, for, for the houses which will crack just after three months. With, for the houses which will crack just after three months. And then you see this, in this house, you can see outside while you are standing inside. And then when you raise the complaint, they say, no, you signed a happy letter. Thank you, leadership. Greetings.
Greetings to my leadership. We appreciate this opportunity that we have been given. And also we appreciate the information that we are being given. Because us people who are working with the community. My name is Miponi Cecilia Di Coco. I come from Bloemfontein Ward Six. We are working for the community. As we work with the community, we've got many challenges. We appreciate the objective of this bill very much. I'm not going to dwell much on the details or the contents of the bill because most previous speakers have dealt with that. My main concern from where I'm coming from, that is my ward. In my ward, we've got vulnerable children. We have grandmothers. Most of them are very poor. Unfortunately. When Freedom Square construction started. Two rooms were built. And the toilets there. The land was not properly surveyed. They are sinking now. Even the toilets now have sunk. So when it is raining. There's water coming in. I do have a photo of one such. Vulnerable children are staying in that. You can't sleep if you can go there. The sewage is running inside the house and those kids are staying in such a house. There were other eleven houses that were built. There's only one standing. And now it's half. There are many people staying in that. Others are sleeping outside, they have even constructed a tent outside. So those are the issues that we come across as people who are working on the ground. So we are appreciating the contents of this bill because it will enable you to come and interact with the people who are on the ground. We are appreciating this bill because it will protect the residents. There are no halls in Freedom Square where creation can take place. We don't have libraries as well. Where kids can come in to finish their homeworks. Most, most of the kids in my ward become substance abusers. That was my concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I greet the honorable leadership that is in front of us. And greetings to the community at large. My name is Mujaben Seala. I come from Bloemfontein Ward Forty-five. I concur with the contents of the bill and I really appreciate it a lot. But the main problem for being here. It's my aunt, I've got an aunt. She's staying in Bloemfontein in Ward Forty-five. My aunt had five daughters. Four have passed on, one is still remaining. The elder one, the daughter, the elder one's daughter passed in twenty fifteen. She registered for the RDP house in twenty twelve. There was a pile of soil or building material that was dropped there but thereafter it was taken away because. When she passed on in twenty fifteen, she had four kids. And the husband passed on. My concern is that these kids are staying in a leaking shack. They are staying with their grandmother who's my aunt. She is not only staying with the kids of the daughter, the elder daughter who passed on, but there are other grandchildren who are staying there. When voting time comes, people go to her promising her that they will construct a house for her but thereafter nothing is happening. Even today, she's still staying in that shack. One of the grandchildren whose name is Homujo. Is a substance abuser. He's mentally disabled. And stayed there at a rehabilitation center for some time. He has been taking treatment but sometime, at some stage, he stopped using that treatment. This drug addict now is abusing my aunt and then they have decided to build a shack next to the one that my aunt is staying in. This grandson who's an addict is actually troubling everyone in the community. He has been beaten by Nyanyazotzi group, he doesn't even have teeth anymore. Now what I'm realizing is that he's going to be killed by the community. I've been to social workers. With my aunt to report this matter. So the social workers are saying they'll take him to the substance abuse associations.
Thank you, ma'am. Go and register that problem to the staff then. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Greetings, my leadership. My name is Pule Mudupi. I come from Ward Two. I can hear your noise, it means that you don't have your masks on.
Please, let's listen to one another.
My name is Pule Mudupi. I come from Ward Two Butchabella. In Bloemfontein. I hear that in Freedom Square, there are RDP houses that are being constructed there. Even the hostels have got RDPs. But Butchabella doesn't have RDP houses. It's still the old houses. When you touch the construction stone. It's a red stone that can be easily crushed. Our houses have broken down. Due to heavy rains. I would appreciate if you can go there and see what is happening there. There are no RDP houses at all there. Thank you very much.
Go and write through.
Greetings, my leadership. My name is Michael Shali. I'm from Ward Thirty-Eight. There's something that I'm asking myself as the upcoming contractor. We must work with the people who are called inspectors. We've got a challenge sometimes when we have a building plan and. Yes, we need a house to be built. We've got a challenge with the municipality. To approve such a plan to be built on such a site. I've got fear that us as the upcoming builders will be sidelined or have some challenges to get into the field. Because it's like this bill has been designed for us, the upcoming builders. May the leadership please observe this matter carefully for us, the upcoming builders. We've got a challenge as small businesses because we don't get funding. It's like the funding is like allocated for certain people or companies. Thank you very much, my leadership.
Thank you, Baba.
Thank you to the leadership for coming to Butchabelo. My name is. I'm from Ward Thirty-Six here in Butchabelo. I have a problem of housing. I was built a house in twenty ten. I signed and my house was completed successfully. But one day when I knocked off. I found that they had installed new doors that were not correct. So I've been going up and down at the housing office in Butchabelo. They said they would help me up until today. Even the taps inside the house had been removed. They said they would replace them but nothing has happened. Even the sink. The second point is that I was sent by my lady neighbor. She was also built a house in twenty ten. It appears that her house has been built. And when they built it, they got material from her. The material was taken and the house was built elsewhere under the name of the site owner. Thank you very much.
How's all in general, Medisa?
I greet you all, leadership. My name is Mpo Steven Matuan. I'm from here in Ward Thirty-Four. I have a company called Biate Electrical Project. It's very difficult to get a job here locally. Because outside companies come and take jobs from here. We propose that there should be a database for construction companies in Butchabelo, Divetas DOP and Tavantshu. So that it is known which companies are there that can do those construction jobs. Because now people from outside come and take jobs in our areas. Even their safety measures are not up to scratch because I worked a lot for Escom and I know what the safety procedures should be. And even the company that is doing work currently in Butchabelo, they don't even have those procedures. When I come to the contracts in the Butchabelo area. Or the people building in and around Butchabelo. They also work without any safety measures. In the M sections, somebody fell. Because he was standing on top of crates while he was working. They were building a shop for a Pakistani. This is now an issue for our government because the person was not registered. And now when they have become injured, it is now an issue for the government. I won't be long, I just want to focus on the issue that there should be databases for us in Butsabella, Divetas DOP and Anda Mangawung as a whole. I want to deviate just a little bit, when are we getting farms? Because I'm sure that when you leave here, you will be hungry. And the bacon won't be enough there where you are going. If we had farms, we would be able to supply you with the bacon. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you to the, greetings to the leadership. My name is Hulusurwani. I'm from the other side of Watu 14 in Soltan. Our problem is builders' is that. We heard as many speakers have spoken. The problem is this regarding the housing. If you don't stay in a house, there is really nowhere you can go, you will just remain staying in a shack. I heard as the first gentleman speaker was speaking. His heart was very sore and I also was very touched by what he said. Because as a black person, when you have worked and it seems like you have worked for nothing, it is very hurtful. So leadership, this is what I have to say. Because most times when buildings are about to happen, the first aspect that comes in is the environmental side. To check the site where the construction is going to take place, how the land is. We as a nation are very many people. And we have to take into consideration that we still have children who are going to come into existence and be where we are. Because the land is not increasing, but the population is. As the first step is to check the land, sometimes we find that the land is not adequate. But as the people need sites. Because you cannot dig and build a foundation in a place where the soil is clay because your house will fall. That is why we have people who, their duty is to check the land before construction begins. We as a nation have to have patience, but when you are hungry, you do not have patience. So you find that as a builder, I may come from outside and I'm going to build a house for you depending on the money that you pay me or the amount that we agreed on. We are upcoming builders. And we hope that the NHPRC will assist us. Greetings. My name is Maissak Sibitwani, I'm from Watu 44.
43.
43.
Tabantu.
Tabantu. I have serious problems. The problems that I have are not mine, but they are community problems. I sell in the town of Tabantu. I'm the Nafkok organizer. And I'm also a member of the community group. The problem in Tabantu? Is housing. Who, houses that are occupied by black foreigners. Yesterday, we were going around the area. And we discovered very scary and surprising things. Which I'm very afraid to speak about because they were very distressing. In places in our area. But God assists us. We were surrounded by the police. Police from Velcom. The police from Tabantu are in cahoots with the foreigners. When a foreigner has just been arrested, the police goes to the foreigner and asks for a bribe. We will never be okay, our lives are in danger. Because those in leadership are not looking after us. We have to come together and take care of ourselves together. We can't even sleep at night because of the gunshots. We don't even know where they are from or what is happening. At 6:00, we are already in bed like chickens. As I am here, I'm already afraid whether I will find the child that I left at school. Because they also take children and do as they like with them. We saw a very distressing situation and if our law is the one that created this, this problem, they need to sort it out. Please assist us as the government.
Thank you ma.
He's going to speak in English.
Greetings to the leadership. I'd like to apologize first by my actions earlier. I apologize, I was just crying. And thank you for the mercy as well that you have provided for me to talk today. I will line up my participation in this manner. I have a concern.
Who are you Papa?
I am Godfrey Kakosha, sorry. I am Godfrey Kakosha, I reside here in Watu 38. I'm working with architects, I'm still studying. I've been in home building for quite some time, I was introduced by my father who is a messlar. And then we have a company that builds houses and then we are registered also with the NHPRC. Yes, as I was saying, there's a concern about the PTO that I need to lay today, the PTOs. What are the powers of a PTO? Because in Watu 38 where we stay, there's a new squatter camp that has just started from 2019. And then there's three ladies that were issued PTOs. But now there is some gangsters that have occupied their sites. Even though those ladies have come forth to express that they are still interested in staying in those sites because they are budgeting. They are raising funds to build their houses there. And the proposal to the municipality was that we need land to stay, we need to build decent housing, not shacks. That is how it was articulated in the application. And now the challenge on that site, that earth, it's clayish, pure clay. And it's quite expensive to build it, that is why they took their time to raise funds. That is my concern. Yes, and then now there's a complaint to the housing and water and sanitation directly. We have a sewage pipe that was blocked by, we don't know why. But there's a sewage pipe that is running in front of where we stay. Even the street now is closed, kids are unable to play and it's there, it's been there since 2019, it's there even today. Thank you, and then that is it. Otherwise, my input on the bill, I accept it, I accept the bill, it's quite beautiful. As one who's practicing as a builder would say in the built environment, it has a clear direction, I love it. Because I haven't had the chance to actually quite go through the proposed one. But the one I know, it's like it was more about protecting the consumer. But this one, it's like we are also included as builders. Though I would like to request that... Yes, so the issue that I'm having is that the inspectors are not on the ground. We as builders, we are registered with the NHPRC, we are paying our annual fees. But we find houses being built right in front of us. Inspectors only go in the suburbs and then in the location, we pay the same amount as they do. But we are not protected in that way. So I would like to request that the inspectors be on the ground. So on that note, my request is that it will be better for the penalties not to be imposed only on the builders. The homeowners as well, let them be penalized for appointing a non-compliant person to build their own houses. Because it's not if I am the homeowner, I'm not the only one who's going to stay in that house. There's other people, my kids are going to stay in that house. So I'm liable for the lives that are going to live in that house. So the person, the owner of the house, needs to be penalized for appointing someone who is unregulated. And then I think that that is it, thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to take this opportunity to thank the inputs that we have received here. But there are some of the issues that were raised which need to be clarified even before we go back to parliament. We are with the people from NHPRC. Kina le ba tu ba zwa NHBRC. Uh, they were listening when you were speaking. Ban ba le mamete halenze le bua. I'm going to give them ti- time to talk to some of the issues that you have raised. Ki tla ba famunyetla, or ba arabele, ze dinza dinthote uli di pamisiteng. Because some of the issues need to be resolved even before the bill been passed. Obani ze dinza di tle tle bo kapo, dingongo reo du lukela orarulea, le pili bili kapasiswa. And we have, uh, uh, the gentleman from the Department of Housing. Kina le musompe ya zwa hule tuna la matro. Who's responsible for writing of this bill. Aika ra be la, ngongo lo, ngabi leena. Leena kitomun, fa se baka hori, leena are, clarify some of the issues that were raised which are not put in the correct perspective. Ki tla mo famunyetla wa hori, abu eka dinthote bandi le di sa tlale hea kapo, di sa be hea handle. And from there will then give you a way forward. Ebe her lefa, or na rzo la pele joan. Um, I'm not sure who to start you. Akina boni tiba, or ki ma tla kala. You'll introduce yourself, um, before you speak, I, I forgot your name. Kita iti vi sanda, depele ubuakile vitsi vitsa laha. Le bella ba. Ko paosheva su chavi.
Uh, thank you very much, Chair, and thanks to the honourable members.
Kiya lebo aha lo, ki leboa, li di thote habani.
And, uh, ki ku palu, lewa shabaka fe.
I would like to thank all the community that is in here.
Chair, I'll respond to some of the three important issues that were raised by the community.
Modula stulo ki tla araba ela di nklense taro ze bang se chaba se buileka zona.
But before I do that, let me introduce myself, my name is Kwezi, my senemisungwenya. I'm the head of legal services in the National Department.
Li vizo laka ki Kwezi.
Senemiki ngwenya.
Uh, my senemisungwenya.
I'm the head of legal services in the National Department of Human Settlements.
Ki lo ho ya zamulao, panu ya matro. Mister Ngwenya, um, camera people wants to see you, can you come here next to me?
Thank you once again, honourable Chair and honourable members, I'll respond only to three important questions.
Ki tla arabe la di potzonze taro zabusho kwa.
Those are the very three important questions that have been raised by the members of the community.
Ze uki di potzonze taro zabusho kwa, ze pamisitwenke se chaba.
The first question that they have raised Chair and the community have raised the issue about the quality of the appointment of members of the board of the new entity.
Ba pamisitza, nchaya busho kwa, ba buling, ba di thotza, za karulo ya botu.
We want to assure the community that in this bill we have made sure that the people that the minister must appoint as members of the board of the entity are qualified people, people with experience in building, people in experience in the built environment as a whole.
Kene te fadi ze horo, le tuna hala keta ba tu be tla ba karulo ya botu, ebe ba tu bana li mangolo, li bi piso lo ka hunya mat.
The other important point that they've raised Chair is the issue that relating to the warranty fund.
Engwin teba e pamisitzen, kitaba ema ba pili litu uli kapo warranty fund.
And I want once again to emphasize the point that we have made sure in this bill that this warranty fund does not only apply to the RDP houses, but it also applies across the board from both the bonded houses and the RDP houses.
Kene te fadi ze happy, or le zolilena warranty fundi, hale ame fe la, matro a, ahuanga RDP impa le ya di bond.
Remember the, the importance of this bill and the establishment of the NHBRC is to ensure that the houses that we build are of quality, not only on the RDP, also on the bonded houses. So the quality of the houses is what the intention of the NHBRC need to ensure.
Espe osahu eziwa ha NHBRC, go netifata horo, buling ba matro a, ahuang, bugazi la e tso netzing.
The other important issue ya bo fe lo, a community raises is the issue of the availability and the visibility of the inspectors when the houses are built.
Engwin te e pamisitwen, ki bu ten le bo na hala ya, basashubi ba matro ana, honete fata hori, abulimbo tso netzing.
I want to assure the community that we have made sure in this bill that there is a clear definition of the role of the inspectors of both the NHBRC and the municipality. And we also, they need, you know, to be visible all the time as and when the structure is built of the, of any house, the bonded house and the RDP house.
Uh, bili en happy, netifata hori, basashubi ba zwa, humaspa la le NHBRC, baba dem ba bo na hale, honete fata horo, zo chedi etza halakasi pi.
And the last point that I want to emphasize is that we have extended the application of the act either to the bonded houses and RDP houses, but we want to protect the consumers not only at the time when you receive the happy letter or the letter of occupation.
Kene te fadi ze happy, or hobeteng kama no ba ken sa, uh, hufua ha matro RDP le ana a, a, a bondi we, honete fata.
Ki ba ta, I want to assure se chaba hori, what we have done is that we want to make sure that the warranty cover, you are covered, the structural integrity of any house is done from the beginning, when the house is being done, from the foundation up until the roof level. Not only at the time when you receive the happy letter or occupational, or occupational certificate.
Warranty cover, netifata hori, ntuhae ha ua, ki abole nghotuaka long, hufisela one wa, le ngolo lahu kena, ilin happy letter e nu ehchu wengi, impa buli, ntuwe ne wa, ni tla be liya, bulimbo tso netzing.
Lastly, what we have done is that we have made sure, I want to assure the community that we have made sure that in this bill there is a provision that deals with matters of the NHBRC should go on each and every town doing consumer awareness and consumer education about the importance and the role that the NHBRC is playing in the built environment as a whole.
Happy bili ena, netifata hori, NHBRC, ba emedi bayona ba da zamadi, tu lo ka fe la, ba rudasa chaba, kaka rolo e ba e ba palan, me ba tu ba te be handle, se ba lukela ngosufuma.
Thank you very much.
Kiya lebo aha. Uh, NHBRC? NHBRC.
Afternoon, honourable Chairperson, members.
Uh, timela, uh, modula stulo tla tla han, leba dirika wena.
I'm Natasha Fushia and I'm from the NHBRC's Legal Department.
Kina Natasha Fushia, me na ki tza koho, n. Ho tza ko, lefa penlata simola.
Um, can, can you speak to the mic, ma?
Stakeholders, we have, um, noted your concern, we appreciate the comments, you know, and the valuable inputs that we have received today.
Rona banale sa be ba ro na, reze thoko di tchua elo, za lo na, reze thoko ma twenya ho, alona halunzuluwa kachisa hungeno ya.
My colleague has, uh, you know, given a summary of the most critical aspects that this bill will cover.
So, mudirika na osa tza ho, kakisadinka di le malo ze tota ilin di garo, ze di bu thoka thoka tata, ze di itleho, ze di itleho akare tza kemula othomo ono.
Then I want to commend our, um, stakeholders that are here, that are currently complying with our legislative requirements in terms of, you know, your registration enrollments.
Ya non ki batla ho leboja xape, le banale sa be ba ro na ba ba le tenfano, ki ba akho le, kala ba kalahora, ba iko be la melawana, e zamisana leho ikuadi sa.
Uh, I want to say to our stakeholders, the NHBRC is accessible to all members of the public. It will further, you know, um, conduct roadshows and expand on its visibility.
Ibe le ba tla ho le solofesa horo, NHBRC, itleho tza ya, maye to pa pa, zo ho ngelo ho ngwe, itleho bonda ki ba tu bo, tse leho di ra di roya, yo na kamu ho koka kahan kati.
The NHBRC has further expanded its footprint by going digital. The NHBRC has further expanded, um, its footprint by going digital.
Me happy idrisa le, idiloza digitally, uh, hori, e, hona kufitela lo, ki ba tu bo, kongelo ho ngwe. That is yo na, n, uh, uh, NHBRC.
You, uh, as home builders, housing consumers, you can therefore, you know, access the NHBRC's website and are able to, um, register as home builders, renew your registrations and, you know, check up on, uh, home builders that are registered with us.
Kaja lo ba kona kui di risa, di, 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 di risa tze loza digitally, ho bo na ngtwa kha ho, uh, lo kui di riseta, kui kuadi sa. Uh, ilo kora ba tla ba kona kui kufitela, di ba tla falo, zo kese di thoka kahan kana ko e.
Stakeholders are however, you know, encouraged to visit the offices of the NHBRC.
Be lo na jaka banale sa be ra, i, ze ho roho kana khaske kha di ra, ho lo kona kui etela, office ya ro na ya NHBRC.
We are situated at two hundred Nelson Mandela Drive.
Halu ba tla ho ya kochione, iko two hundred Nelson Mandela Drive.
Brannvach in Bloomfontein.
Eh, hona ko Bloomfontein.
They can also contact us on our toll-free number.
Kaperna le toll-free number, ilo kanale kholaha nyaluru na bo koyone.
Zero eight hundred.
Zero eight hundred.
Two hundred.
A two hundred.
Eight two four.
Eight two four.
Thank you.
Kiya leboja.
Um, re, thank you very much. Um, NHBRC and the department for clarifying some of the issues.
Leba tata lefa pala NHBRC, ho bo lela kakisadinka, ze di ya di sa kalo hanwa sente.
There are issues that have been raised which cannot wait for the passing of the legislation.
Hona le ba tata ba, ailen aklaki siwa, ailen ho ro ona, agaso ho no ho leita, kufitela la, emula o, oze ngoa di riso.
Particularly, uh, problems with regard to some of the houses and all the things that we have mentioned here.
So ho lo bo ho lo ba tata a, amana ngle matro, di lo zo tse, ze di bu lenka zo.
Um, as a committee, we are going to compile them and start the process of handling them.
Rona jaka committee, ritleho di kokwanya zo tse, ebe loha lea no, la hori, eri di ne, le bo ho ba, di shanitso ho ya kohobo.
And those that are responsible, they will have to be attended, they will have to attend those issues.
Me ba banale me ikara be lo kazo, ne banale tshana la ka hori, ba ra ra bolule ma tata a.
There are issues of corruption that were raised.
Hona le ma tata a, tshana li di tiro zabonwe, nuwe, ailen ho lela aklaki sa.
Um, we will continue to raise it with the department to strengthen their capacity on the ground and monitor the implementation of their programs so that we avoid corruption as we build houses.
Re tleho aklaki sa, ko lefa pen, ho re ba nono te, di roya bo ne ya hona ba beile, ma, di tiro ze dinza yalu li cho. Eh, leho di ra ho re ba kona kui fe di sa di tiro ze zabonwe, nuwe, mo tiro ya ro na ya ho aha mat.
Where there is a clear cut of issue that need to be attended immediately of corruption, as a committee, we are going to take it up.
Bo hona le, bo na halos sente ya ho re, hona li tiro, e bo na la sente, e sa pota poti, ya bo nuwe, nuwe. Rona jaka lefa pa, arta di ra hori, re we la kudimu, nte lo ho senya na.
The, the other issue that we want to indicate is that Minister of Human Settlement has just presented the budget.
Se le sasen sere ba tla ho se bafa, pele halo na ki hori, uh, tuna ya, kamelo ka matro. Ufe sa honela ku ya ka, hoi, e, e, amana ngle budget, de, ho tsa teka ni toka bomadi.
Before we came here, uh, we were debating about that budget.
Pe le re ta fa no fara le zee, re ngani sana, ka budget e.
One of the issues that Minister has raised was that they, they have, um, realized that there are blocked projects.
Se le sasen sere sa kakisua fa, uleha le mo teha ka hori, hona li di projecte di we, ze di sa kati limpi.
Di nklote lur, di ahilwe, acha fe la, acha dune, ba di shileka, di slape, di mu di abadur, ela, burakontraga ba chavile.
So it's houses which have not been completed, some of them, when you look at them, you just see the slab or maybe they haven't been raised right up to the roofs and construction companies have actually taken off.
Ministera le MEC, wo mo province sing, le, le maspa la o ahandin to. Ba te pisite committee hori, bana lele nanoe, le longore, le, le to, ya three years, who rectifier those challenges.
The provincial MEC, uh, and the minister from this particular province have made some promises that they are.
The minister comes from national, Minister of Human Settlement, the MEC of Human Settlement in the province and the MMC or the municipality that is responsible for building the house.
So ki tonaya, abusetaba, esin fe la ya province, le di MMC za berkan le zone, ba di se, ba di le di solofesa, di zin jalo, sa ho re ba tleho, erara bola ba tata jo.
And the other important thing that he has raised is that uh, people who are, who are elders and childhooded family and disability, they are not supposed to queue on the beneficial list.
Ni bile ka po kalisu so jalo, ho re, mama la pen, ailen ho re, di thoho za oneke bana, ho za ba hu, di ba ba sa se ba hu di ya tata. Kabatshana lo ho re ba be, omu tenha le na ne, la ba tu ba ba, le tezing honewa, di siame lo zabonwe.
And they are working on digitization of the beneficial list so that as you register a house there will not be a manipulation, uh, on the process of those lists.
Ibe le ba berkanasentelele nanoe, le, la ho re, e, ha konsolo la pele ho, kuadi siwa mat, ho ske khanali, di tiro zabonwe, nuwe, molina nengle, udi di tiro katso ne.
Oh, so that everybody who has registered to get a house, he must know or oko na ba man and when he's going to, uh, to get his house.
Ho re, mo to mo we, le bo we, yo, ilo ho re, o kuadi si zu, ala, ota itesente, ho re, oko na ba man, eh, ilin uncho, a ti leho he ne wa.
Um. The, the last thing that you have raised, um, it's on the the involvement of foreign nationals or the illegal occupation of RDP house.
Se le sasen sere sa sila sa kakisua fa no fa, eh, ki ho tse nele la ka, ba choba e, esemba mona kenyarona, ba ba na ngutenga, the RDP houses staro.
So we have noted all the things that we have raised and this committee will take will take those that are belonging to the department to the department and continue to to monitor the, the correction and the implementation of all, of, of, of all those issues that you have raised.
So reze ba tata a o thoko, rea soze, me, ma fa pa, a, tshaneso ho berki sanale, ma tata anten jalo, a ta isua kuahobo, kuahobo one. Ilo ho re bo ne ba ja ba kona ho, ho tsa kato ka wo.
That's why we were taking issues, uh, and your names because we would further, um, need information on particular matters as we are going to attend to those issues.
Ki lo na le ba kalahora bornare, leka ho tza ya, di shana za lo na, le ma ina alona, ilo ho re, tara ho no, ho di ra di kato ta te di so. Ma le ba na le ma tata a, ilo ho re loa, kakisita, hara ba ta se di musezo, e wo ike te hile.
And there is an issue that has been raised of the Tabancho, of, uh, having houses that is owned by a Northwest Development Corporation, which is worrisome.
And then ka po hona le ba tata bo bo, ba taki si zu, engmo taban so bo hotuing, uh, projecte, ya ten, ho bo na la, idiro ki, uh, Northwest Housing, uh, Corporation. Se le sere ose twenya tata haru ka so.
We will take the matter up and, um, um, will, will engage the two provinces and make sure that they correct that.
So re tleho za han kaseo, re ta di ra ho re, di province te, kabu be di di risa no mo ho, ho ra ra bola ba tata jo.
So, it doesn't mean if you have not mentioned the issue that we have raised, we have not captured them.
Hasi, haso ho re, a, ilo ho re, hara bua, ka ba tata bo bo wena, oba taki si zu, hara buka.
So I was just trying to show that we have listened to your issues. And the committee is going to deliberate on the bill, looking at the input that you have made. We are still traveling throughout South Africa, getting, soliciting the inputs from communities. After that, this committee will deliberate on your inputs and make changes if there is need of changes in the bill. And therefore, we want to take this opportunity to thank you for your input. They are valuable, they are going to contribute towards a betterment of our building environment. Tomorrow, we will be in Bethlehem. And after deliberated ourselves as this committee. On the inputs and the bill itself. Will be tabling our report to parliament. The parliament, after adopting the report, then it will be taken to the other house. Another house. The other house called NCOP. NCOP consists of members of provincial legislatures and the direct elected members into the NCOP. Libona, they will still have the same process to make sure that everybody gets a chance to make input into this bill. And we have advertised this bill on the newspapers. And then receive input from various stakeholders. So even those issues will be integrated into all these, uh, things that, um, the information that we collected through public participation. So those that have not had time to send anything or speak, you still have time when the NCOP comes back here in your area. In that note, I'm going to ask reverence to close for us with a prayer. Not a verse, a prayer. Thank you. Thank you, we don't have to go out. There are foods prepared for yourselves. Don't sit where you are seated. There are people who will come and give you food.